This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Alpena Regular Council Meeting of January 19th, 2021. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess.
Councilwoman Hess here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell here.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor is here. All right. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, I approve the agenda as printed. Make a motion to approve as printed.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hess.
Pass, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak, yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor, aye. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda this evening, council?
No.
All right. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for regular session of January 4th, 2021. Any issues or changes with the minutes?
No.
Nope.
All right. Next up is citizens appearing before council on agenda or non agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. I'm aware that Megan Lacrosse is prepared. If you still are, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Abby Laine. My name is Megan Lacrosse, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. As parents of three children who attend All Saints Catholic School and active parishioners of All Saints Catholic Parish, my husband and I support the recommendations Steve Schultz made to the council on December 21st, having a functioning traffic signal at the intersection of Second Avenue and Miller Street to gain better traffic control or flow, and especially to increase the safety of schoolchildren and families. The school's enrollment is over 100 students, with the majority being driven to and from school. Only a few walk and/or ride in APS transfer bus. The concern with this traffic light is not a pedestrian safety issue, but more a traffic safety issue. St. Mary's Catholic Church next to the school is used and occupied by parishioners 24 hours a day, seven days a week for eucharistic adoration, more than just an occasional service. Every hour, at least one person at the minimum travels through this intersection on their way to or from praying at this church. Police Chief Judd has provided information for tonight's meeting regarding the number of traffic accidents since October 2011. Does this information also include reports by the Sheriff's Department and Michigan State Police? And have you considered the number of traffic infractions, including speeding tickets, which have occurred on North Miller Street? Traffic lights also help to control the speed of traffic. Controlling how fast people drive next to an elementary school and a church, which is being used at all hours of the day, is vital. I understand and I agree, this intersection does not see the traffic volume as other intersections to warrant a three-cycle light 100% of the time. But this intersection does need something. School families have seen numerous near misses. There have been fender benders. A parishioner almost died after being hit walking across Second. A family member of mine was hospitalized with injuries. And this past October, a rollover accident with schoolchildren inside the vehicle occurred. School families and others fear it is only a matter of time until there is a fatality. Changing or updating the light at this intersection could also create a safer downtown. Going north on Second, the last traffic light is at River Street. Traveling south on Second, there is no light before the traffic is forced to slow down to turn either west onto Carter toward Holiday Inn Express or east onto Water Street to the stop sign on First and Second on First and Chisholm. When a new light or stop sign is placed, it will take time for drivers to adjust. But then it will be clear what drivers are supposed to do. I even take a second or third look to make sure it hasn't switched to a three-cycle light. And it's been this way for almost five years. But I take that extra look because it used to be green, yellow, and red. Once again, we support the proposal for a functioning traffic signal at Second Avenue and Miller Street. This will provide clarity for drivers, control the speed which vehicles drive, create a safer downtown environment for businesses and patrons, increase the safety in the nearby neighborhood, and above else, create a safety zone for young schoolchildren. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
I do not. I don't. I don't think council would normally have any questions for you, your statement, and you also emailed some details as well. I appreciate that. But obviously, I'm assuming you're going to stay on the meeting for that topic. What I'd like to do is, is if there's anyone else that I see you, Seth, hold on just one second. What I want to do is, if anybody else is going to speak to that same topic, please either voice in or, or put it in a chat window that you're about to. Is there anybody else on that same topic for Miller Street? Okay. All right. Not that, not that someone can't as we move on.
Mayor. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have a couple callers that we need to unmute and make sure that they don't have a public comment.
Okay. I'm going to go with Seth next because I can, I can see him and he raised his hand. Seth, go ahead, sir. State your name and address for our records, please.
My name is Seth Peters. I live at 1119 South Fourth Avenue in Alpena. And I go up Second Avenue to get to All Saints Catholic School each day for school. I'm, I'm here to support Megan Lacrosse and the comment that she provided. I just simply want to, to voice my addition to it. I have, my wife is the teacher of the students who were involved in the rollover, the most recent rollover at Miller and Second intersection. And I can speak from her experience that those students were very shaken by, by that accident. They, they are still dealing with some concerns and, and worries in their, in their dreams even after that accident. So it was no small, it's no small consideration that when something happens like that, even though there wasn't a fatality, there were young children in kindergarten and younger involved in that accident. I also, I, I didn't, I was at the door doing dismissal when that accident, that rollover accident took place. I was able to see the reactions of people coming into the parking lot who did witness it and the, the ashen white faces. And then people, and then I heard the word of what had just happened over on the other side of the building. But I have been outside when an accident took place at Old Field and Second. And the, the alarming sound of the crunch of the vehicle as someone was pulling out next to what had been the CIA restaurant. And I want to just reiterate and second everything Megan said, but also add to it. Fear is, is not only for the school, but now that there is no light, people just proceed up Second at whatever speed they care to. And there isn't courtesy and there isn't consideration on the part of so many. A lot of the, a lot of the difficulty at that intersection, Miller and Second intersection, is that when Lincoln School is letting out, there's that period of time when Lincoln School lets out that you can't, you can't edge out into traffic. And the sightlines, I want to bring that into question as well with all of us. The sightlines and visibility when you're at either Miller or Old Field trying to turn onto Second, you have to nose out so far before you can finally see whether there's oncoming traffic from either direction. And, and it's, that's what's causing the problem. That's what happened in the, the crunching accident that I heard at, Old Field, was that the person was trying to nose out to see if they could cross the intersection to get to the other side. Because the brick walls and, and the, the vehicles parked on either side, right now during COVID, we don't have the vehicles parked on other side. But when they are, it creates a, a wall barrier that you can't see around until you've nosed out far enough. And once you've nosed out far enough, then you're risking a, a, a front-end fender bender of some kind. And so now there's no obstruction all the way through the post office. If you've, I've, I've seen this every day. People trying to cross the street, they park on one side of Second to cross over to the post office on the other side. They're, they're dashing, all these elderly people trying to like hustle across the, the Second Avenue to get to the post office because there's nothing, there's nothing preventing the traffic from that point northward. So it, the people just barrel through inconsiderately. And when we had that light, it forced people, at some point, they were going to have to stop. So there was no sense in getting up to 50 miles an hour if you knew that you were going to have to come to a stop at some point anyway. So it had a deterring effect, I believe. And I, in the time that I've seen it, in, in my personal experience, I've seen that deterring effect of the light now completely abandoned. And, and people are driving through there at speeds they shouldn't, especially when there's poor sightline visibility. We have elementary schoolchildren in a school zone.
Peters, I don't mean to interrupt, but you only have five minutes, sir, and you're, you've went over your limit. So wrap it up, please.
And we also have people who are going into the church for adoration on a 24-hour basis. And so we have a lot of considerations there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate it. And now I'll, Seth was the only other person I was aware of, so I will give a couple minutes for IT to unmute some phone guests in the event they, they would like to.
They're currently unmuted.
Anyone else for public comment at all? Any topic? You're muted. I, I see you're talking, Craig, but you're muted, sir.
Yes, I'd like to, to talk about the cemetery.
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks.
I'm sorry. Name, name and address for our records.
Sure. My name is Craig Staley. I live at Nine Pedro Vista, Taos, New Mexico. So I grew up in Alpena. I still have a lot of family who's there. I visit multiple times a year. This in regards to Evergreen Cemetery. Approximately eight years ago when my mother passed away, I had noticed other grave sites have benches. I, at that point, went to the gentleman in charge at the cemetery at the time and asked, inquired about them, and he basically said we could have one. He told us it had to be made out of concrete, granite, or stone, no wood, wood or degradable products. So we purchased one and put it on my mother's grave. This summer, we noticed it was gone. And we ended up finding out that ours, along with several other people's, were removed and tossed behind the dumpster in the weeds. It's my understanding, and I've not talked to Jim, who's currently in charge out there. I have left messages for him to call me, but I've not heard from him. Trying to find out why. It's, my sister's also made some phone calls and what the gist of it is, it's my understanding now that it's against the rules. So I guess I'm looking for some guidance and some, as far as how to handle this and where to go with this. I did, you know, walk around the cemetery and there still is other benches out there. For some reason, ours, they didn't like. I'm not sure anymore than that. Obviously, as we get older, and it's really not for me at the time, right now, but my aunt, she's in her 80s. She's severely disabled and she can't really sit out there, you know, stand out there, and she needs to sit. So I don't know what the solution is. Would like to see some direction from the council going forward, what to do about this.
Thank you, Craig. And if you're able, we're going to discuss the Evergreen Cemetery coming up. If you, as long as you don't mind sitting through a couple of other topics. That's, our engineer is going to give a presentation on the current rules. And, and then we'll have some discussion and, and within that discussion, we'll address the, the rule about the benches. And hopefully, your, your questions will be answered, sir.
I appreciate it, Matt.
All right. Anyone else for public comment?
Are you able to hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes. My name is Randy Zeeman. And I live at 439 South State Avenue in Alpena. My subject definitely isn't as important as Miller Street light, but it's definitely been an issue with quite a few people. I was wondering if the city had any plans for public restrooms for walkers, cyclists, and out-of-town people. This has definitely been an issue with people we've talked to, walking and biking around town. I've actually had to, you know, actually, I've seen little kids have to go to the bathroom outside because there's absolutely nowhere to go on these walking paths or out on the city pier. And, yeah, it's, it's definitely, definitely an issue. And I hope that, I hope that the city has got some kind of plans to address this. The other issue that I wanted to discuss was, I would really appreciate it if the leaders of the, of the departments in the city, police, ambulance, fire, water, et cetera, would talk to their employees or their workers about texting and driving while they're working. Pray that they don't even do it in their own personal vehicles. We live on State Street. We have a two-story home, so it's very, very easy for me to look down on the street. Plus, I do a lot of walking and a lot of cycling, so I'm always out, I'm always outside. I've even had to call the police station. I've never turned in any car number on the police station or any other people. But I have, you know, alerted them that their employees or their, their, their workers are doing this. And this is everybody. This is policemen. This is ambulance drivers. This is city water employees, city plow trucks. And man, I just hope that they, that they talk to them and tell these people that they need to, they need to stop for one thing, and they really need to start setting an example for other people. Very, very dangerous. Me and my wife do a lot of biking, had very many close calls. And one of them was a county truck that almost hit us up in Rogers City. I've had to contact the county sheriff for the same reason, with county sheriffs texting while they're driving. I know they have computers in their cars too, but very, very dangerous. So that was the two issues that I wanted to address, and I definitely appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. And obviously, our city manager and most department heads, if not all, are, are on here and can individually address the texting and driving. I'm going to, I am going to ask, and I don't normally do this, but you did, you brought it up and it's just, does he, do either Rich or Rachel, do you have a one-word answer for what year the restroom restorations are in CIP to be restored?
They've been in the CIP for the past couple years, but because we, when we passed the balanced budget this past year, that was one of the things that was cut. There's potential, there's potential that it could come back. I would defer to Rich on the possibility for that.
I was just gonna, and I didn't want to get into a big discussion. I just wanted to see if it was still on the 2020. Apparently, it may or may not be. But I'll keep an eye out for that as well. But it certainly is the reason why we had the other ones destroyed before we were ready is because they were basically not worthy of entering. We'll leave it at that. But we will get moving on the restrooms as soon as possible. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone at all? Okay. Thank you very much for being here. We'll keep moving. Tonight on the consent agenda is a single item bills to be allowed in the amount of $222. That would be nice. I'm sorry. $222,889.87.
Councilman Noak, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Hess?
Pass, yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is presentations. We have A is the Fiscal Year 1920 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Phil Stralian and Chelsea McConnell, Australia Lamp Crenzline PC are here for that presentation. If you'd like to unmute and, and begin.
Thank you, Mayor Walagora. Can, can you hear, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Phil Stralian. With me is Chelsea McConnell. And we're the auditors for the City of Alpena, and we're here to present the audit for the year ended June 30th, 2020. And there's a couple documents that we're going to go through, and one would be the Big Bound Audit Report. You've got the cover up on the screen. It's a 210-page report filled with lots of facts and figures and information. But we're going to be very brief, knowing that you've had access to this document. Along with us during the audit process in which we impose on Anna, Leland, Rachel, and all the other staff, we have probably a total of seven, eight people from our staff that do work on the audit. And a couple of things, I'm just going to kind of get some, give some general information in a, in an introduction. And then Chelsea, we will get into some of the key schedules and some of the key numbers of the audit. But along with the audit, there is a letter that I'm just going to briefly go over. It was a separate letter titled at the top, Communications with Those Charged with Governance, which would be you, the council. And also, sometimes we do have to do a separate or a special audit dealing with federal funds that's triggered by the receipt or the expenditure, excuse me, of $750,000. The City of Alpena really hasn't been receiving a lot of federal funds over the last few years, so that audit is not required. We also do consulting throughout the year if requested. And there are some regulatory filings that we do assist the city in and staff with. But before I get into maybe just discussing a few things with the audit communications letter, I did want to point out on page 25 of the audit, once again, you'll find that the city's been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It is a, it is a award that represents the best practices through a rigorous, independent vetting process. There are graders that go through your report in order to get that certificate of achievement. And they're specialists in governmental financial reporting. And they are very thorough and very precise in what they're looking for. And again, you were awarded this. This is the 26th year in a row that you've been awarded. And again, it is a model of transparency and excellence in financial reporting. So again, our kudos to Anna, Rachel, and the rest of the staff that pursue this award. Right now, I just want to go through the audit communications letter. And again, it's, it's an opportunity for us to, to explain or to report on some things that aren't numbers that sometimes can make your head spin when you look at all the numbers in a 210-page report. But one of the things is, we audit the financial statements, but the report is really your document. It's your report to the citizens, to other third parties. And in order to put these numbers together, there's a number of things that we have to ensure that, one, it is a comparative report showing 2019, 20. So we have to make sure that the policies and procedures and application of accounting pronouncements were the same for both years, which we're confident they are. And that all of the transactions that are necessary to be reported have been reported. And that all the guidance that was followed is authoritative guidance. For instance, you can look at your report and it would be very similar to a report coming out of some city in California or Illinois. And that's important to be able to compare reports, whether they're in Alpena or some other city. Also, in the report, there are certain accounting estimates, and those are identified in the letter. One, if there were any difficulties encountered in performing the audit, we would have to report those. And we're pleased to report that there were no difficulties or there were no uncorrected statements or misstatements in the report. There were no disagreements with management during the reporting or the auditing process. And then also, on the third page of that, there are certain recent pronouncements that we like to highlight. But what, what has happened during the COVID period, there's a number of new pronouncements that were supposed to have been implemented that have now been put on the back burner by the Accounting Standard Force. And we do briefly discuss what those standards are on page 118. So if you did want to see what's coming up, but has been simply delayed by COVID, again, you can find them on page 118. Before I turn this over to Chelsea, I did just want to mention that one of the big expenditures, one of the big liabilities for governmental units, whether they're school districts, county cities, deal with pension and what we refer to as OPEB or Other Post-Employment Benefits. And the key feature of an OPEB or post-employment benefit would be the healthcare. And you can find a pretty thorough discussion starting on page 99 of the audited financial statements. There are some other places in there where they briefly discuss, but the key footnotes, dealing with pensions and OPEB, again, start on page one, excuse me, page 99, and go through page 112. So there's about 13 pages that cover this. But what I would like to just what I would like to just mention is that during the last fiscal year, you made contributions to the pension of about $943,000. Your pension is funded by about 74%. This was actually a, a re, excuse me, a uh, a reduction in the amount funded. The amount funded means the amount that you have in assets to cover those liabilities. In 19, it was 79%, it's dropped down to 74%. So the liability has gone up about $1.8 million. Um, on the other side of that, there's also a liability for the OPEB or the retirement. Uh, that went the other way, which was favorable, it went down by about 1.2 million. And you made a contribution of about 371,000 to the healthcare benefits. The healthcare benefits aren't quite funded, they're on a little more pay as you go process, but they are funded about 39% compared to the pension, which is funded about 74%. And at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Chelsea and Chelsea's again, got some of the key financial statement or schedules that she's going to go through.
Good evening, so as Phil said, this report is over 200 pages, so um, I'm not going to be able to go into much detail about all of it, but I'm going to go over and point out some items that I think are important and would be maybe important to you. So the first thing I'm gonna talk about is the opinion, which is on pages 31 and 32. So as Phil also pointed out, this report is yours and really the only two pages in this report that are ours is this opinion. So the, the point of an audit is to get this opinion issued and on whether we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. And materiality is a concept that's utilized by auditors. Um, we also make various risk assessments and internal control assessments. After we make these assessments and we have a basis for our materiality, we then plan and perform the audit based on these. During the audit process, we have standards that say we have to gather sufficient and appropriate audit, audit evidence to provide us a basis for us issuing this opinion. Um, so I'm pleased to say the city was issued an unmodified opinion, that is the best type of opinion you can be issued. And it means that we do believe the financial statements to be presented in all material respects. So the next thing I'm gonna talk about a little bit is the government wide financial statements, which are pages 47 to 49. Now, these are on the full accrual basis of accounting, which is very similar to a private sector company. Um, it differs from the fund statements that are on the modified accrual basis, which focuses on how money flows in and out and what is available for spending at the end of fiscal year. Um, the requirements for the government wide statements came from the government accounting standard board or GAZBIE for short, statement number 34. Um, and then the governmental fund statements are going to be on pages 50 and 51 and then 54 and 55. And in between on pages 53 and 57, you'll find reconciliations that show you the difference between these two bases of accounting and the two statements. Um, the main items that are different, the most significant items would be capital assets and debt. Um, on your government wide statements, those get fully recorded and at the fund level, those aren't fully recorded. Um, so I'm just gonna talk about some of the fund statements right now. Um, the general fund ended the year with an increase in fund balance of about 586,000. Um, and there was an increase in governmental fund balances overall of about 427,000. Um, so even during this unusual year with the pandemic and the economic uncertainties, the city had a really healthy fiscal year. Uh, and I think this shows the city did an excellent job managing their budget and maneuvering through these uncertain times. Um, it's the city's policy to maintain a minimum unrestricted fund balance of 10% of total expenditures in the general fund and a max of 20. At June 30th, 2020, the city's unrestricted fund balance was about 32% of total general fund expenditures. Council had approved for that 20% threshold to be able to go over it due to so many uncertainties happening. Um, so it's okay that it went over that maximum. Uh, also, general fund expenditures were lower this year, so that probably has something to do with that percentage being a little bit higher too. Another important ratio to look at to measure the general fund's health is how many days of expenditures there are in unrestricted fund balance. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than two months for this financial measure and at the end of fiscal year 1920, the city had about 117 days. So you surpassed that recommendation and that also was an increase of about 18 days of where you ended 6/30/19. So I think it just shows the general fund is in excellent fiscal health. Um, pages 58 to 65 are going to be your proprietary fund statements, which will include the water sewage and internal service funds. So these funds are also shown on the full accrual basis, like the government wide statements. The internal service funds are the equipment and stores funds and they provide activities to other funds of the city. So because of this, when you do move to those government wide statements, the internal service funds actually roll into those governmental activities. And so your business type activities column up on that government wide statement is going to end up in your enterprise funds, which are your sewage and water funds. The sewage and water funds also had very good years as well and they both had increases in their net position as well. On, on page 118, which is the last page of the note disclosures, there is a subsequent event note disclosure for COVID-19. Um, here this event is being disclosed because it's just unknown, I mean, it's expected to have a negative impact on the economy. Um, prob, it's probably going to impact the city's operational and financial positions, but it's so uncertain and we can't reasonably estimate anything at this time that that's basically what that disclosure says there. On page 121, the required supplemental information or RSI um, is where that starts. So here you'll see the general fund and the major street fund, which is considered a major fund to the city. You'll see their budgetary comparison schedules. The city didn't have any significant budget overages, as you can see from these statements, which demonstrates there's proper internal controls in place over amending the budget on a timely basis. Um, back here, you'll also find the pension and OPEB required RSI schedules, but I'm not going to go over those. Um, beginning on page 132, the supplemental information section starts. So this section is going to have a lot of different statements and information that's in more detail than what we looked at in the front, which is considered the basic financial statements. So some things that you're gonna find back here would be your non-major governmental fund statements, which all of these funds are in one aggregate column in that front statement. Um, you'll also find a detailed general fund statement, there's comparative water and sewage fund statements. So anything that you wanna see more detail of, these are going to, you're gonna probably wanna go to the supplemental information section of the report and look at these statements back here because they're much more detailed than the basic financial statements. And I think that's most of what I wanted to cover. I also was just gonna take a second to commend Leland and Anna and the finance department because they do a really excellent job. And it's always a pleasure to work with them and be able to provide services to the city. With that being said, does anyone have any questions over anything I talked about or didn't talk about that they saw in the report?
Uh, thank you, first, thank you Phil and, and Chelsea for your presentation and working so well with our staff. Um, I'll open it up to council in the event that anyone has any questions from the presentation. Okay, I, I do not, uh, always appreciate it and um, I'll definitely take the rest of my evening to go over the other 200 and some pages that you didn't cover. Um, but thank you again, thank you very much and um, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file that.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, oh, go ahead Mike.
All right, uh, Councilman Noak, I move we receive and file.
Johnson, second.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hough?
Hough, yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Motion carried. Uh, Chelsea and Phil, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your fine work on this, on this uh, huge undertaking, I know we're probably one of your bigger clients and um, I know it's a lot of work and we appreciate everything that you put into it. And I think this year we were even a little bit ahead of schedule. Um, we got it done sooner than we did last year, so we're, we're improving every year and that is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you Phil. All right, next up is under presentations is the Huron Humane Society semi annual report and Mary Egan is here from the HHS.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, awesome, I'm the vice president of the Huron Humane Society and I, as always, am, am very honored to be able to come and speak with you tonight. Uh, we had a very robust year at the shelter, it was a, it was a strange year, I know for everybody. It took a lot of adjusting. Um, and it hampered our ability to fundraise, but we ended the year better off than we ever have been. So I have a, a good report for you, we'll start with uh, intake and adoption numbers from the Huron Humane Society in 2020. The city of Alpena contributed 502 felines last year, it was incredible. That, that is uh, up considerably from the 286 cats that we took in from the city last year. And we also had 77 canines, that was 62 in 2019, that's a total of 579 animals just from the city of Alpena last year. Animals from the city of Alpena, of course, are given priority admission into HHS because of the service contract that we have with the city. This is especially pronounced during kitten season when the city of Alpena kittens and cats jump felines from other geographic areas on the HHS cat waiting list. 336 kittens from the city were taken in by HHS this past year. Total of 22 animals came to HHS from other jurisdictions besides the city, I know that seems strange. We probably should have more, but we didn't last year, the, the vast majority of animals came from the city. Adoption outcomes, 75 dogs were adopted last year, that was 90 in 2019, so we're down a, a little bit with dogs. Uh, 477 cats were adopted last year, that is up from the 384 cats that were adopted in 2019. And that's a total of 552 animals adopted last year as opposed to 474. That is something that is astounding, given that we were close to the public for a lot of that time and adoptions only happened by appointment, so kudos to our staff for that. Return to owner, 11 dogs, 17 cats. Um, you can read, I know you probably all have this report, so you can read those numbers a little bit more in depth. The average length of stay for dogs at HHS is nine days. And the average length of stay for a cat at HHS is 21 days before being adopted. Our bookkeeper is not yet done with our fiscal uh, year for our final profit and loss statement for 2020, but preliminary numbers suggest that in 2020, HHS took in 601 animals and spent $270,000, meaning each animal cost about $449 to care for. We also took in $356,202 in revenue in 2020. HHS had an audit in 2020 by Johnson CPA and Company PC, which showed the society is in excellent financial shape and practicing sound financial accounting. We have invested in the veterinary and structural health of HHS. That's one of the things, it's in our service contract that we take care of our building and we continually uh, try to improve it and we are doing that, we gutted and remodeled the canine maternity room, we remodeled the dog intake room. We put a new floor in the canine care storeroom, added equipment to the veterinary care room at the shelter. Some of that money came from grants from the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan. We uh, had equipment added that gives us the ability to do more onsite testing, which allows us to try to lower our veterinary care bill. Last year in 2020, we spent over $45,000 on veterinary care alone for our animals. If an animal needs care, we get it for them. We worked with the Alpena Community College Manufacturing Technology Club students, they're been wonderful. They are making two small kennels, we, we've got some kennels that honestly are um, about the size of a small microwave that we just can't put animals in. So they are going to make those kennels usable by combining them and they're going to fix the hinges on our dog kennels so that they function better and they're safer for caregivers. So that's a, a project that benefits our animals, our caregivers and the students at ACC because they learn while they're doing. We put in a new door to the utility storeroom to make accessing that room easier on staff. And uh, we continue to look for opportunities to make our building the best it can be until we are able to move into a new building. Having demonstrated our continual commitment to fiscal, ethical and humane responsibility and action over the past year, the Huron Humane Society respectfully asks for continued funding and the renewal of its contract with the city of Alpena. If HHS were to build the city, the $449 that it costs us to care for each of the 579 animals we took in from the city of Alpena in 2020, the bill would be nearly $260,000. It's important to note that that $449 per animal includes testing for common infectious diseases, flea and tick treatments and preventatives, heartworm preventatives, all standard age appropriate vaccinations, socialization, care and feeding, any needed veterinary care while the animal is at the shelter. Spay neuter surgery performed by Alpena County Veterinary Clinics. The service HHS is able to provide because of generous donors and funding from our service contract with the city benefits public health for animals and humans alike. We are honored to contribute to the health and happiness of so many Alpena pets and the families that they eventually join. The Huron Humane Society requests the same amount of funding from the city of Alpena as was agreed upon last year. For this price, the city is covering about $34.54 of the $449 that costs us to care for each of those animals that we took in from city residents last year. That $34.54 barely pays for the first round of testing and preventative treatment each animal receives. It doesn't cover spender services, veterinary visits and care, vaccinations, the cost to employ professional animal care technicians to humanely care for the homeless companion animal residents of Alpena, the society's insurance, maintenance or utility costs. I know many of you are pet owners, you know how expensive it is to responsibly take care of your animals and you, you times that by um, 579 and it's considerable. To put it further into perspective, the average cat spends 21 days, as I said earlier at HHS, before being adopted, which works out to about $21 per day. Funding from the city covers about a day and a half of care per pet, for, per cat, I should say. The average length of stay for a dog at HHS is about nine days, which means it costs about $49.90 per day to care for a dog. Funding from the city doesn't even cover one day of care for a canine at HHS. Funding of $20,000 is a good bargain for the city of Alpena and would be put to responsible use by the Huron Humane Society. We really truly wanna thank the city for valuing humane best practices, for managing the homeless, unwanted, neglected and abused animal problem in the city of Alpena. We at HHS are grateful for the partnership that we forged with City Hall to socialize cats and get them adopted and have nothing but glowing things to say about them, the staff there and our relationship with the city of Alpena Police Department who periodically brings The Huron Humane Society requests the same amount of funding from the city of Alpena as was agreed upon last year. For this price, the city is covering about $34.54 of the $449 that costs us to care for each of those animals that we took in from city residents last year. That $34.54 barely pays for the first round of testing and preventative treatment each animal receives. It doesn't cover spender services, veterinary visits and care, vaccinations, the cost to employ professional animal care technicians to humanely care for the homeless companion animal residents of Alpena, the society's insurance, maintenance or utility costs. I know many of you are pet owners. You know how expensive it is to responsibly take care of your animals and you, you times that by 579 and it's considerable. To put it further into perspective, the average cat spends 21 days, as I said earlier, at HHS before being adopted, which works out to about $21 per day. Funding from the city covers about a day and a half of care per pet, for, per cat, I should say. The average length of stay for a dog at HHS is about nine days, which means it costs about $49.90 per day to care for a dog. Funding from the city doesn't even cover one day of care for a canine at HHS. Funding of $20,000 is a good bargain for the city of Alpena and would be put to responsible use by the Huron Humane Society. We really truly want to thank the city for valuing humane best practices, for managing the homeless, unwanted, neglected and abused animal problem in the city of Alpena. We at HHS are grateful for the partnership that we forged with City Hall to socialize cats and get them adopted and have nothing but glowing things to say about them, the staff there and our relationship with the city of Alpena Police Department who periodically brings us the animals needing our services. We are truly appreciative of our relationship with the city and we thank you for your commitment to the health and wellbeing of the domestic animal population of the city. And I just want to close by inviting each of you, not just council and staff, but those who are here just, just taking in the proceedings tonight, to come visit the Huron Humane Society. Call first. We do have a limit on the number of people that can be in our building at one time, but we would love to show off the shelter and the animals and answer any questions that you may have. Though I will do my best to answer any questions that you may have right now for me. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you. I appreciate it. I don't have any specific questions. I don't know. I will leave it open for council if anyone on council has any specific questions for Mary before she leaves.
Councilman Noak? Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora? Councilwoman Hough?
Hough, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up, I have a proclamation for this evening. This is Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week. So whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established in October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation, and whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of film to communicate ocean and Great Lakes issues and inspire a shared vision of conservation of ocean and Great Lakes environments through the, through stunning, sometimes controversial and always conversation starting films, and whereas the Great Lakes region often considered the third coast as a vital part of global waterways, thus making global issues our issues too. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival explores water issues through some of the most impressive ocean and Great Lakes films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities and discussions with award-winning nationally recognized filmmakers, there, now therefore I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 20th through the 31st, 2021, as Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week in the city of Alpena. And this is virtually available online to residents at thunderbayfriends.org. And I'm not sure if Jeff or Stephanie are on. Sometimes they like to give just a little brief update and this one being a little bit different because it is virtual. I'll give them a second to unmute and check in if they are.
I believe they have, actually they're all meeting this evening that they're hosting, so I'm thinking.
Okay. All right. Thank you Amber.
I do have their proclamation, which I will send to them.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. We did take a photo the other day offsite for the media. So we will move on. Next up is report of officers, election costs and voter turnout for November 3rd, 2020. Anna, let's go to that.
Okay, um, so tomorrow is inauguration, so it makes it seem like this election was so long ago. I apologize that it took this long to get a report to you, but we had to get all the costs together and that takes a little bit. So the cost for the November 3rd general election totaled $13,732 after reimbursement from the state for postage on absentee ballot return envelopes. I believe that equals about, oh, I think it's on the report, like $1,600 or something. Over half of the total cost was to compensate the election workers for election day work and training. The city had 8,718 registered voters at the time of the election, which is an increase of exactly 300 voters since the August election. The voter turnout was 62%, which equals 5,427 votes cast. Of that total, 2,803 votes, or 51%, were absentee ballots. So to say that we were busy in here during that time is an understatement. The largest group of voters at 1,359, or 25%, was once again comprised of females aged 60 and older. Precinct 1, located at the Aplex, had the highest turnout among the precincts with 1,484 votes, or 27% of total votes cast. Precinct 1 has the highest number of registered voters at 2,750. Interestingly, though, Precinct 5, located at First United Methodist Church, had the highest voter turnout at 70%. So that's 70% of their own registered voters. This precinct has 1,400 registered voters and 987 of them voted in November. You go to the next screen. Well, this is the election cost. And as you can see, like right before the grand total is our largest cost, as I mentioned, payroll with training, $7,485. Um, I'm sorry, up at the top, one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, it says postage after reimbursement. This is what the state said that they would reimburse us. So this is the first time in, in the time that I've been here that we've actually put postage on the return envelopes and that was because, you know, we were getting reimbursement from it. But actually, a lot of it went unused because people returned them in our, in our new ballot box outside or sent them in the mail. All right, well, they are using the postage then, but, or they dropped them off in person is what I meant to say. On the next screen, I wanted to do some visuals this time around. So the first one is voter turnout by gender. So each of these groups are the precincts. The dark blue are the males that actually voted and the light blue are the males that are registered. The dark pink are the females that voted and the light pink are the females that are registered. As you can see, women outpace the males. And we go to the next slide and we have voter turnout by age group. And this is again grouped by precinct, but then we have, the dark blue is 18 to 21-year-olds. The orange is 22 to 30. Gray is voters aged 31 to 40. Yellow is 41 to 50. The blue is 51 to 59. And the green, which you can see way outpaces everybody else, those are voters aged 60 and over. And then the last slide that I have is the absentee ballots issued versus processed. So the blue represents the ballots that we issued for each precinct. And then the green bar is what was actually returned to us and processed. That's the, the numbers that actually went through the tabulators. For whatever reason or another, the rest of those were not returned to us. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions here Anna. Just a sincere thank you. I know what you're, you and your team go through on those days and I really appreciate all the efforts and everything that you guys do for all the elections to make sure everything is counted.
We appreciate that, Councilman Noak.
Anna, I agree with Mike and I, and I like the, I like the bar graphs and I just find it really interesting that people who requested an absentee ballot seemed to be really dedicated voters by these numbers compared to ones that just show up at the polls. So it's interesting to see. And go, go people over 60. I like that group. I am in that group.
We did well, didn't we?
Yeah. Thank you.
51%, that is significant and I mean, obviously, a lot of that is due to COVID. People are, are voting from home and, and just being careful and safe. So, I don't know. We'll, we'll continue to see how that goes and I believe for 2021, as far as I know, we're only going to have one election. That's the city in November.
Right. But thank you.
Thank you Anna. Definitely appreciate it and appreciate the, the, the presentation. I'm assuming we would receive and file that one as well.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, motion to receive and file the election results.
Councilman Noak, I support.
Was that Councilman Mitchell for support?
Yes, yes it was.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hough?
Hough, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
And Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, unfinished business. First one is Evergreen Cemetery Regulation Changes. Rich Selinger, our engineer, is here.
Evening. Tonight, I'd like to present the modified regulations for the Evergreen Cemetery for review and approval by the city council. These regulations are the culmination of the previously approved cemetery regulations and recent input from city council. Staff has strived to incorporate the suggested changes and still provide cemetery staff the controls necessary to maintain the solemn nature of the cemetery. Your review and input and ultimate approval of these changes is requested. And I'd like to, like to go through just a few of the changes so council is aware of them.
You somehow muted yourself, Rich. If you're talking, we're missing it. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I must have hit it by accident.
That's okay.
D5, we've eliminated the ban of motorcycles. So motorcycles are allowed in there. You know, if we have disrespectful activity, we can always refer to the police and if we have to revisit this. The other change there is basically we would ban skateboards that are off the designated bike path. If they're on the bike path using that, no problems there. It's, we really don't want them in the cemetery. Unfortunately, sometimes they don't stay on the roads and use the grave markers inappropriately. Moving on to section five, grave markers and monuments, page six, suggested by city council for materials and construction for grave markers. We've allowed, this shall include marble, stainless steel, bronze plaques and similar materials. Markers shall be movable if necessitated for other burials. This was a suggestion from council. The big thing is we want them to be securely mounted in there and also that we do have the ability to move because from time to time, we do have to relocate headstones to facilitate other burials. Page eight, section 6C, winter decorations. We have tried to expand on definitions. Winter, so we've gone into winter decorations such as grave blankets, wreaths and Christmas in nature style decorations, which can easily be removed, et cetera. The city does reserve the right to not allow a winter decoration if it creates a hazard or concern for the cemetery property. Obviously, we wouldn't like, we don't want somebody to come out there and put an eight-foot artificial Christmas tree on a grave. That makes it a little difficult, but other Christmas type decorations, no issues with that. And then the last was more of a question for Bill and I think Bill has addressed this. Item seven, removal of items. City council reserves the right to disallow and/or remove any marker, engraving, etching or decorations which in its opinion is openly or suggestively profane or obscene. My understanding from Mr. Pfeiffer is that that is still a legitimate statement for us to make in, in the rules. I just like to address a couple other issues that were raised tonight on benches and that. We do typically allow family members to place benches there with the approval from the cemetery sexton or the employee working over there. In the, in the case of the benches that were removed, there was about five of them that were removed this summer. As, as grave use expands, additional headstones were put in. And in the case of the, the bench in question, there were some headstones that, that had gone in that prohibited us from being able to mow through there. So in that case, the benches and, and like I said, not just that bench, but other benches were removed and placed back behind the cemetery building. Typically, and I did speak with Jim Kuchansky on this, our, he's in charge of the cemetery, DPW. When we remove something like that, if we have a contact information on record, he does try to make contact with those family members so that they can get it, get it back or they can come pick it up. At least they're aware of it. We don't have contact information for every, every grave marker out there, which we did. Unfortunately, we don't. But in those cases, like I said, they do get placed back there. I think in this case, this bench was picked up by the family. I did speak with a representative from the family here late last week. Did explain that to, to them. But we do, from time to time, do have to remove those, those items that are placed out there. We leave them there as long as we can, but if they start interfering with our mowing, mowing and maintenance activities, then we do need to remove them.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. And I guess before we move on too much further, since we're on the bench topic, and then I do have a couple other quick questions, but on the bench topic, it's, it's covered now in F2 and, and these are from like 2011. And it's, what it says now currently on this one is benches are prohibited except in the case of a bench set and engraved as the headstone of a lot. In that case, the bench must be made of material that is solid and considered for all practical purposes permanent and indestructible. Is it, is it allowable by the, by the sexton, on the, on the sexton's discretion as to whether someone can, like, like if someone's already got a headstone now, but they would like to have a bench for maybe their elderly relatives, as our guest had suggested, is it possible for them to put in something that at the, is it? something that, at the, is it, I don't know if it's called a footstone or something towards the other end of, but still on their lot, as long as it follows these guidelines of being solid and considered permanent and indestructible?
Each one of those cases would have to be looked at individually. If it does not create an issue with maintenance, then typically, the cemetery employee has the ability to grant them that permission, but he also at that time states to them that it is subject to removal in the future. That was something I did discuss with Jim, and that was his position. And on that note, one thing we, I may go through here and modify, this was brought to my attention after it was submitted to council. The use of the term headstone is probably not as appropriate as it, as a, the term marker, because there are both footstones and headstones, so we will probably go back there, we will go back and modify this. So it says grave marker in any place where it says headstone or footstone.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other the other question I had, I asked Rachel this morning a little bit, and I didn't, as far as headstones or markers in general, you know, there's a statement about them being no more than two pieces, or if so, preauthorized by Cemetery Division Head. I guess because these are moved, my question is, you know, when someone goes to the Cemetery Division Head, whoever it might be in the future, is it, is it in this document, or is it is it relayed to the person that, that if this, if their headstone is moved, and it's, you know, not any neglect of our staff, but it does, but it does break in half, or it just didn't, it didn't sustain the move, is that is that covered in here, that that is, that's not the responsibility of the city to replace that if it's not from our own negligence? How does that work?
Item nine, damage, subsection A, the city shall not be financially responsible for any damage to lots, grave markers, or to structures, and I may have added grave markers in there after this was sent, based on my discussion with Rachel this morning. Or to structures or objects thereon, or for flowers or articles removed from any lot or grave site. So the city is protected on that.
Anyone else on council have any questions for Rich or issues with the rules?
None here.
No? Okay. No questions, Mr. Ray?
No.
Let someone start it, but I think that they're much more, these are much more laid out and understandable to a certain extent than the last ones were, for sure. I hope that we've answered Mr. Staley's question about benches in the future and how that, who to reach in order to get a new one put up, and whether that fits with these rules. I guess I would suggest to Rich that prior to, prior to these becoming a formal document that you do just put in there, fix that, fix that bench part a little bit, just so if someone reads it, they do, they do realize that they do have an opportunity for a bench as long as it's approved by the Division Head. Otherwise, I don't have any other questions. Really appreciate all the work that you guys put in this over the last couple of months off and on, I think. Do we, to be honest with you, I'm not certain, so I'll have to go to Bill perhaps, and let me know, are these adopted by, adopted by council? Is that the normal procedure? Bill Pfeiffer?
Yes, Mayor.
Unless anybody's got any other questions or issues with it, I'll leave that to someone to adopt these. Councilman Noack, I move we approve the amended Evergreen Cemetery regulations as presented.
After he changes the grave marker to the word?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
Councilwoman Hough?
Hough, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noack?
Councilman Noack, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Motion carried.
Next up is the farmer's market lease agreement, and Rich is also going to present that.
Just to back up before we get into that, once these are finalized, they will be posted on the City of Evergreen's website, and also available in printed copies at the cemetery office. So I just wanted to make council aware of that.
Thank you, sir.
Farmer's Market Lease Agreement. After input from City Council and their interaction with the Farmer's Market Group, the attached lease agreement is being presented to City Council for approval. Under this revised lease agreement, the following is proposed. The city shall oversee all other rentals of the warming shelter building. The Farmer's Group shall have the use of the office area, but shall not restrict access to other users of the building. In other words, they want to be able to use the office for Farmer's Market Office. However, any other renter does have to be able to get into that office to access switches, etc. The Farmer's Market Group shall have access to two storage areas within the building. The Farmer's Market Group shall rent the building on Saturdays and Wednesdays from twelve AM to eleven fifty-nine PM, and rent shall be four hundred dollars per month. And I know that there was some feedback from council members that we can certainly address as we go through this tonight.
Are you waiting for me, Rich? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear.
So, so I, so I, obviously, this has been going on for quite a while, just trying to get this right for both parties. Trying to look out for, you know, obviously, the best interest of a city-owned building, but also, from my perspective, I'm very, I think everyone is very welcoming of the Farmer's Market being in the building. I did have a couple of issues that I brought up for Rich. And I, I think I mentioned in an email that, to forgive me if I didn't realize that it went from a half a day to a full day in any other variation of the lease agreement, but I did pick up on it this time. That it was, that now, now we're asking for rental hours from twelve AM until eleven fifty-nine PM, which you know, obviously, takes up an entire Saturday and a Wednesday, and if the, I'd like, maybe JB at some point to maybe answer to, you know, whether that's going to be, they're actually going to be making use of the facility beyond that, and probably one of the one of the reasons I kind of brought that up is, is because, you know, when I was going over what I personally thought was a fair price for the, for the shelter and the surrounding property at four hundred dollars a month, to do some really quick math, eight times a month, that'd be, you know, about fifty dollars per day that they're going to be using it. And if it's for a full day, and if it's anybody else that wants to use that facility, it's going to be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I was just just kind of trying to bring the whole thing into perspective a little bit. Those were probably my bigger issues.
If I could, if I could address that, Mr. Mayor. When the Farmer's Market originally approaches, their hours typically run from early morning, seven AM. I believe they stated till about one PM. We could probably modify that to basically allow it to run from twelve AM to two PM, which would give them an hour of cleanup time. I know where they're, where they've typically been outside here, when they're out behind City Hall, most of the time, you know, they were gone by one thirty or so. Because they're going to be inside, it may be a little different, but I think we could certainly work with them and shorten that up to in the neighborhood of two o'clock. That would still potentially provide for other rental opportunities on that Saturday evening.
I, for one, would like to, would like to look at doing that. Like I said, just to, just to give pretty much anybody else, whether it's a graduation party or a small wedding or something like that, a venue to use on a Saturday afternoon if the Farmer's Market isn't going to be in there. And then, so we'll kind of open that up for the rest of council to give their opinion. The only other thing I think I'm going to mention about the contract itself is that, is the termination by either party. Sixty days with cause and four months, no, sixty days, yeah, for cause or a minimum of four months advance notice without cause. It just seemed, that just seemed a little bit excessive to me. I'm not really worried about either, to be honest with you, except that, once we get to the point of doing some major modifications to the park, which I don't see any time in the foreseeable future, but in the event that something does come up, I don't think the city necessarily needs that much time for either, and so I just kind of wanted either Rich or JB to kind of speak to why, why, why that much time is necessity under either of those scenarios. So those are the only things I was concerned with, so I'll open it up to to council, and I'll kind of go around, just so we're not tripping over each other. So I'll just start on my right with Cindy Johnson. You'd like to?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just briefly.
Oh, sorry.
Or sixty days and four months was a holdover from when Performance Locker was in there because of the investment that they had made into the building. That's why we had discussed and worked out the four-month agreement timeframe with them. It was simply just a carryover. I'm sure that those timeframes can be reduced.
Yeah, and thank you, Rich. And like I said, I wouldn't expect either, either to happen, but I just wondered where those dates came from, and now I know. So, thank you, sir. Cindy, go ahead.
Okay, I agree with the mayor on shortening the amount of time for the days that the Farmer's Market has. The only thing that concerns me is if we keep it at twelve AM, if there's an event, let's say there's an event Friday night, I don't know what it, and they need, and they're in there after twelve, and they're cleaning up and stuff, we're kind of stepping on people's toes. I'm not sure why the Farmer's Market would need it at twelve AM. I would rather shorten it up kind of more in the time period that they need. So even if it's, you know, if they start coming to set up, you know, you know, five, six in the morning, I'm okay with that, but having twelve AM as the time might interfere with an event on Friday night for them to get cleaned up, get out of there, so that they're not infringing on the lease agreement with the Farmer's Market. So if we could maybe make it more in the time period that the market actually needs, I would like to see that. I also agree that we should shorten up the termination on both, on both sides. But I would also, I also think that in this agreement that we need to have an increase, a yearly increase, because costs go up for everybody. Utility costs go up. It doesn't have to be crazy, but I think an increase, some percentage increase yearly should be included. And I'm open to anything on an increase to three percent. I'm good with.
Can I speak to the issues of time, I guess, opening and closing?
Yes.
Yeah, JB, if you'll do that, just so, just so if it's, now that it's been brought up, we can kind of start tripping off some of the topics. So go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I think, you know, we're okay if coming, coming in in the morning and setting up, and you guys can stay set up at, you know, if somebody was in there, had to be set up there past twelve o'clock at night. I don't think that's a problem. The morning, you know, having us leave around two might be somewhat of a problem, so we do have to clean up afterwards. I think in most days, we would be able to clean up by two o'clock. But we do sometimes have our events going on there, too. We have, like, our kids' day, that actually goes to two o'clock, and then it usually takes longer for us to clean up for that event. But in most cases, I think probably two would work, but if you just let us kind of have some exceptions there with something like that, and be aware of, like, in the wintertime, there's a little bit more cleanup involved, because we do have, like, the salt on the floors in there that takes a longer clean and mop up. And then, you know, cleaning the bathrooms and everything, and we don't, sometimes don't always have somebody there to clean it right away either. So it makes it a little bit more difficult on our part to do that with the time constraints. But I think, I think the midnight, being out of there, you know, maybe we could come in at, maybe say, say, six o'clock or something in the morning, go two, like I said, we work most days, but some days it might be a little bit later than that. If we knew ahead of time if there was going to be a renter in there after us, then we'd be able to accommodate for that.
And I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. I think that maybe on those, maybe on those weekends, on those Saturdays where you have those events, and I think that you put out a calendar on those, maybe just let the city know when you might be there longer, so if they do schedule an event, they know to go a little bit later in the afternoon to let the next event in there. I have no issues with working with, working with the time period.
We could certainly make those accommodations in here as well. And we do, that was, that there was a potential, because they do have the kids' day, they have various events that may run a little bit longer, and if, as long as they let city staff know well in advance of what those days are anticipated to be, we can then accommodate that within the schedule.
That all, that sounds fair enough, and I don't want to jump back in, but you know, if something more in line with, like, just to cover anybody that wants to come in early, if we go, you know, five AM to two PM, I just want to make sure, and that's, you know, there's usually with, when someone's, there's a scheduling, you know, I don't know how far in advance we're supposed to schedule that thing out for individual parties and stuff. I just want to make sure that, you know, if it's a little bit of time here and there, you know, if nobody's coming in there after you, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that it's not, you know, it doesn't become repetitive where, you know, the Farmer's Market is having events that are going, you know, late into the late afternoon or evening, because, you know, because no one else has it rented. As long as we're, as long as we're made aware of that well in advance, and if it's going to be really long, then maybe we'll have to change the compensation just for that one period or something like that, but I don't, I don't, I don't intend on seeing it being abused by any means, so. Cindy, did you have anything else other than?
Nope, nope, that's all I had. Thank you.
Mike Noack? Mr. Mayor, all of my concerns have been addressed between yourself and Mayor Protem, so I am, I am good with the agreement and the amendments and changes that you guys proposed. Thank you. Amber Hess?
Yes, likewise, with the slight modifications and just clarifications, I'm fine with everything we talked about.
And I'm sorry, I was looking at something else. Danny Mitchell, sir?
That's right, yeah, I, I agree with what has been presented, it's like this, and I have the red corrections here as well, so I'm good to go with everything.
Right, thanks. And so JB and Rich, it looks like we're, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like we're looking at five AM to two PM, and then with slight modifications to that on certain, during certain events. Um, and then with uh slight modifications to that on certain, during certain events, um I uh it does say, uh, whatever number it is. Um, Roman numeral two K says that the um that the insurance is a, is a, is attached as a, as a um attached document, and it wasn't on this one, but I'm assuming that it came, it it will probably come from one that we'd seen before.
It it will.
Okay. Uh, what do you, uh, what do you two guys uh suggest as far as a termination um? Or or maybe Bill Pfeifer could chime in? I mean, it it's um there's really not as, I I understand the the investment in the building that Casey had made. Um, is there something a little bit tighter uh uh that we could probably just tighten that up just a little bit uh as far as um making arrangements or? I don't know what's really common for that kind of thing. Um, JB, what do you, what do you, you know, if we were to i- if the park was going to change into something else or something else happened as far as um um without cause uh of you of you or or us, what kind of timeline do you guys need to, do you need four months to find somewhere new or?
Um, well.
Probably not a fair question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know, I I I couldn't say, I guess, I mean, it two mon- I two months we could, I could do, I guess, I mean, it's not a yeah, I I wouldn't know, but that's I would say, I would ask, I guess, Bill Piper to answer the question too for me.
Bill, did you have any suggestion or?
I I think maybe thirty days for cause makes more sense. Uh, as to the the length of time uh without cause, um I was going to suggest ninety days. That gives uh the farmer's market enough time to plan. You know, to move somewhere if they have to. That seems more reasonable to me.
Yeah, that that sounds reasonable.
Is that reasonable? Okay. Um, let let's go with that then, if uh if that's reasonable for everyone and and I think that was, I think that was it. Was that it?
Oh, the annual increase.
Yeah.
Oh, the annual increase was, it was on one of them, uh Rich, uh that that was um, I highlighted that on my copy, but I lost it. It it's almost like it was gone.
Originally, that was set up for a two percent increase annually, the the rate of inflation or two percent. What that really amounted to was about ninety-six dollars a year change in the rental. Uh, because uh four hundred dollars you'd have a month, you'd have eight dollars change. Really wasn't you know, for for a hundred dollars a year, was it worth the the uh the issues in in doing that? That's the only reason it was deleted out when we revamped this. Uh, we could certainly put it back in as the language existed before, which was the federally rate of inflation or two percent, whichever was less.
Oh, and it, oh, oh, and what, so what you said was that it amounted to eight dollars, um, eight dollars a month?
Yes.
And we have, we have given in on the, on the times. You know, it's.
I I I really don't have a huge opinion on that. Um, you know, I understand that that our cost goes up every, you know, utilities and things. Um uh Cindy suggested as well. Um, oh, there it is, it's under four, four I I. Oh, four I, I think, uh, because, yeah, it says includes utilities, it's, and it says for the first year of the contract, and then it just, and then it doesn't go on to say anything beyond that. Cindy, did you have a suggestion outside of what was on the last one, the two percent or rate of inflation, whichever is what, lower?
Yes.
Yeah, I I and if we, if we go back to that old language, I'm good with that. Um I just think that we need to, and it's not a lot of money, and I get that, and I'm not, and I don't want the farmer's market to have to pay us a lot of money, but I just think that um with the cost of everything going up, that you can't just have it set at four hundred dollars in twenty twenty-one, and if we're still in this at, you know, twenty thirty, it's still four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I I I think it's, uh, I agree with that, that's something, because I would honestly, um unless we get some kind of windfall grant, uh, a- and even then, part of the, part of the new plan uh seemed to encompass the farmer's market in itself. So anyhow, um, and I envision them being there for quite some time, so if you guys are okay with that, with us putting that back in there like it was on the original, um JB, is that okay or?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, Rich, you have your shortlist.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll make those modifications per council's direction and um I'll I'll run it past both Anna and Rachel just to make sure that we have everything covered. And if that's the case, we'll get it over to JB for the farmer's market group to sign.
And and just so we can avoid um this being on the agenda again, um, it, I think we can safely uh approve with modifications made. With suggested modifications or however somebody wants to word that.
Uh, Mayor Potem Johnson, I'll make that motion. So it doesn't have to come back.
Councilman Noah, I'll second.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Mayor Potem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah.
Councilman Noah, yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Mayor I.
And Councilwoman Hatt.
Councilwoman Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, JB.
All right, thanks for hanging in there with us, JB and Rich. Appreciate all the work.
Thanks, thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the North Second Avenue and Miller Street intersection, and I believe Joel Jett has a presentation for us, if he's still on the call.
I'm here. Can everybody hear me okay?
I do.
Okay, good. I've been having some technical difficulties here. Murphy's alive and well tonight, so my camera's kind of acting up, so I apologize for that. Um, so before we get rolling here, um on my memo submitted to council, I just noticed also a typo I pasted re. Very minor, but it just dealt with some directions and some vehicles that were traveling from that incident. It's going to be for the incident on uh November twenty seventh of two thousand thirteen. And um, let me see, scroll on down. Page three, keep on going. Go on, please. It's going to be about the middle of the page, Steve, you see it?
Yeah, yep, we see it.
Okay, and it's not showing up on my screen, I'm sorry. So anyway, this is a vehicle traveling northwest on Second Avenue, uh that should be northeast. And then the other vehicle was traveling actually northwest on Miller, so very minor thing, but uh after working on this report for several hours, I think I was getting a bit slap happy about directions and and uh street names, so uh that's one what I caught there. Um, so with that said, um, I'm going to borrow a page out of Bill Piper's uh book here. And I trust everybody's had a chance to review the document. And um so I'd like to, I guess, start with, uh, I can give a highlight on the report, which is basically going to be off of page one. And um, and then if you want me to explain in greater detail some of the incidents on the report, I'd be happy to do so. So, again, a few of the highlights are going to be, um, we were initially going to be looking at, we thought maybe twenty years worth of information. As I got into this this task, we learned that the state database and also our local databases, they purge after ten years. But with that said, uh we're able to pull up uh twenty-seven documented uh incidents, and I think it's important to stress that these are documented incidents. Um, there is no doubt uh that uh these are the only ones that we know about. Uh, we do not obviously record any close calls or or near misses and things like that, which undoubtedly happen. We'll never dispute that. So we had uh twenty-seven documented incidents uh um ranging from uh October third of two thousand eleven through um October twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty. And as you'll see from the report, uh and I spoke to a couple people about this earlier uh when I was typing this out. Um, I don't really think that the numbers are really in themselves going to shed a lot of light on this decision. You also not notice that at the end of my report, I did not offer any conclusions or or any uh, an opinion on this. I I can if you'd like me to. But if you're looking basically at the numbers alone, they're split almost right down the middle. Of the traffic light was changed from the three light rotation. That was changed in February fifth of two thousand sixteen. Prior to that, we had um fourteen incidents or crashes that occurred when it was still a three light standard configuration. And then after it changed in February of sixteen, we had thirteen incidents that were um as we would say, related to the intersection. Now, Mayor, I know before, sir, you had asked about um some of the terminology when we said intersection related. And I did find that roughly four of these incidents that were reported that were referenced in our our accident reports, our crash reports. Um, the intersection was used basically as a reference point. It was not actually involved in the incident per per se, but it was used as a reference point for measurement. And so we did have four of those incidents, so we can really eliminate bring it down to basically twenty-three traffic crashes that were related within the intersection, if that makes sense to everybody. Yes, sir. Is there a question? I'm sorry.
Uh, no, I didn't hear anyone. Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, again, um, very much like the collisions regarding injuries, uh, we had thirteen of those collisions that resulted in in injuries, and they were pretty well split. Uh, six occurred um when it was a um three light rotating light for red, yellow, or a green, no, yellow, red. And then we had seven that occurred uh within the past five years after the signal had changed in February of sixteen. Um, as you'll see, there's roughly four pages of summaries um regarding the incidents. We had a smattering of, I think, about of everything. Uh, we had, um, let me see. I believe three pedestrian-related incidents. We had four bicycle-related incidents. Uh, we had at least two incidents involving uh drunk or drug drivers. We had several mechanical issues uh where a wheel actually fell off a vehicle. Uh, we had one, I think it was the last entry on page four. Our tow truck had several mechanical issues basically all at once and uh caused it to crash into a light pole. We had uh several uh single-vehicle accidents that um no other vehicles involved other than the vehicle, for example, there was one that took a a wide turn on a slippery road and struck a fire hydrant. Uh, so as you review the the incidents, I tried to provide enough details, you you would have an understanding about basically what had taken place without um smothering you in in too much information. Um, I think you'll see that a lot of the incidents recalled as early as resolved, I think well, as in as in pilot terms, we'd call it pilot error, and this error, in this uh um situation, we would call it driver error, whether people not paying attention. Um, you'll, I think you'll see a lot of those where people had indicated that they had stopped for the light, but then they turned or proceeded through, did not see another vehicle coming or did not see a pedestrian or did not see a bicyclist and so forth. And a lot of it was inattention to, I think, contributed to many of these incidents would be my opinion. Now, we never really know what's going on, as somebody said. Um, you know, we, as we investigate these crashes, we try to ascertain what caused them, whether they were distracted or whoever the case may be. Sometimes we get a pretty good idea and and frankly, sometimes we don't. Kind of have to go on what we can decipher from the actual evidence, the crash, the um, looking at the vehicles, speaking witnesses, and would certainly hope that the drivers would be honest and forthcoming. But sometimes that doesn't happen. So, um, the officers often have a difficult task of trying to decipher exactly what has taken place, and normally they're very good at doing that, and then they take the appropriate enforcement action. Without rambling on too much further, um, does anybody have any questions about anything that I presented so far this evening?
I don't.
You're kidding me.
I don't, at the present time, I don't know if anybody else on council has a question for uh Chief Jett.
Not at this time.
Not this time.
That's the only question that came to mind um just tonight, Joel, was that there was a there was a comment made earlier during public comment about um or this is your report, City Police Department, obviously, would this cover uh anything that was responded to by the Sheriff's Department or the MSP?
Well, um, sir, regarding that, um, I will double check on that question. But to the best of my knowledge, uh, we have handled all the accident reports or crash reports, I should say, at that intersection. We are sometimes assisted by MSP or the Sheriff's Department. I know we did have one accident that we had to do a reconstruction. That was when the child was struck in a crosswalk by the uh drunk driver. Um, but this is our jurisdiction, and as far as I know, they have not been the originating agency for any of these crash reports. Um, we looked at two databases, our internal database for this, and then we also went to the state database, which is called Report Beam. Um, and we did a a search basically under the location, and these are the incidents that that um displayed, and they were all APD. Now, I can confirm that tomorrow, but as far as I know, these are all APD incidents and everything that that we know of, we handled.
Just a follow-up on that, Joel, would that be highly unusual for another uh agency to come in and and cover your jurisdiction?
Um, yes, I would say it's unusual. It does happen on occasion, we uh, if we are let's say tied up in another matter, and uh which does happen on occasion.
Okay.
Where, but it does happen. Um, that, uh, let's say, uh, officers are tied up on a very serious case. We obviously just can't neglect all the things that are happening around us, and so if possible, we may ask for assistance for uh from other agencies. That does happen on occasion. And likewise, they'll ask us, um, if they get busy too, if we can assist in any manner. So, um, it is rare, sir, but sure, it could happen.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
You bet.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, any other questions? Uh, I'm sure the chief's going to stay on the line, but if, uh, any other questions from council regarding that?
No.
It is um statement, okay.
Well, I I hope the report was informative and it uh will help in your uh decision you have to make on this issue.
Okay, yeah, thanks, thanks, Chief. I really appreciate uh all the time that you put into this. Uh I know it was probably a ton of reading and not just clickety-click and copying and pasting, but um I guess, well, so so we remember, uh, everyone recalls the the presentation that um that Steve Schultz brought before us um a few meetings ago. Um so basically, we're still on that, on that same topic. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but uh, but I think everyone kind of recalls where that was at. So, so I've, I've, I read, I read all of these, um, I read all of these cases that that the chief presented to us. Uh, a lot of them, a lot of them. in my opinion, could have really happened just about anywhere. If somebody doesn't see a bicycle or something like that, a lot of them probably could have, could have seen, could have happened at almost any, any intersection in town. As you know, I've always been of the opinion that, that the light shouldn't even exist. I just, I don't see the necessity for it. I've read the points from both of our guests and, and I believe perhaps one other resident has emailed me with very similar comments. And I just, I'm not in the opinion that, that traffic signals slow or either slow traffic down or should be used to slow traffic down. That's an enforcement issue. And, and I, I've been through there quite a few times and just, and recently made every turn possible just to see what the the issues are. And Seth is right. You, you do have to nose out a bit, and like a lot of intersections in town, but if I were coming up on, on Miller Street and I got to Second Avenue, I'm gonna nose out. More than likely, I'm gonna take a right going into downtown, and I'm gonna nose out because I'm not gonna, even if it's a light that's gonna turn green at some point, I'm still gonna nose out and take a right on red. And you have to a little bit. Probably not the worst one in town. The fence, actually, the concrete fence that, that is on the perimeter of the, of the church's parking lot is probably as intrusive, if not more so, than buildings are. But, but at the same time, when you, when you nose out, you can see, you can see both ways before your vehicle actually enters the intersection. That's my opinion. And I can't stop somebody from, from thinking they've got time and then finding out when they get hit that they didn't have time. I can't stop them from doing that, and I don't believe a light will either. So I'll end with that, that it's still my opinion after all of these reports that I would like to eliminate the light altogether and put permanent stop signs on, on Miller Street entering into Second Avenue. I'll open it up with, to the rest of council for your opinions and questions or comments and see where we go from there. Cindy, I will.
Um, I tend to agree with everything that Matt has said. And I, and I spend a lot of time going through that area. There are, there are issues through that whole area, including by the post office. I just think that people, when you're going through those areas, they have to, they have to follow the rules. I mean, if you're behind in a vehicle, driving a vehicle, no matter where it is, whether it's on North Second Avenue, State Street, Chisholm Street, I don't care where it is, they have to follow the rules. And if they're, you know, gunning it to shoot across intersections, they're not following the rules. You just don't do that. So if it's a matter of maybe education and more enforcement in that area for a while, and the chief can speak to that or not, I, I just, putting that light back up and, and the report that Chief Jet gave us tonight is, it shows us, it doesn't matter, just as many accidents happened with the light as without the light. I do think that, and I, and I can tell you this, I went to the post office the other day and came back around because I always either come up by the church to then head down Miller Street. And I can get across that street and haven't had an accident, and I do it quite often. But I did happen to turn on the side of the street where the school bus was that day, and this bus happened to be there, and it was just by happenstance. I just think that there's things that the school can do, and I'll tell you why, can do to help with the safety of the children around the school coming and going. The school bus is parked on the side of the street that is in the single lane. So it's waiting for kids to come out. School hadn't let out yet, but I literally had to go into the next lane to get around the school bus. That's not safe. I think that, I don't know if we can change the, the line on that street so the school bus is on this, it's actually on the side where traffic doesn't have to go on the other side to get around it with kids in that area. It seems to me like some of the close, close calls are gonna, with the children, are gonna happen around the school. I think safety, safety of the kids is important. I, I, and according to the reports that everyone gave, most of the kids are not on foot. If they are, I'm sure that the school's not going to send a first and second grader all by themselves perhaps to cross the street. But if they do, it's, it's the school's responsibility and the parents' responsibility to to educate the children on how to cross the street. So all of that being said, I think there's a lot of education that can be done by the school. I don't like where the bus parks. I don't like that I had to go over the line to cross into another lane to get around the bus in a school, in a school zone. I don't think that's safe. And that's more bothersome to me or worrisome to me than, than what's going on on Second Avenue. If, if we can step up, I don't know, policing that area for a while and, and put out a public announcement through the media that, you know, to educate drivers, they should be educated, but I know that we all get distracted, but I think that people can safely navigate those areas, the post office area, the school area, all of those areas safely. But they have to pay attention. They just do, like you would anywhere. But that's, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. And then coming around to Mike Noah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, you know, one of the things that we do when we all sit here is none of us have any professional public safety issues or, you know, education and such. And it's been, you know, observation when I was, before COVID, working on Second Avenue. We have plenty of lights there. It didn't seem that lights actually slowed traffic down. I always felt when I was out walking that, you know, a yellow light always, you know, caused traffic to speed up, my opinion, again. And I'm not a public safety official. I think one of the things, Mr. Mayor, that I would like to ask, and I'm sorry with the chief at this time, is to maybe offer up an opinion of what he felt a light would do for public safety in that particular area, since that is his job. I would like to hear from him if I may.
Well, sir, your first comment was, was very accurate sometimes. Sadly, people see a yellow light, and that means go really fast, try to beat the light. We, we see it every day on duty and off. Running a yellow light in itself is a violation. This is, it's the same point of offense as running a red light. And, and again, I, I think I come back to not to oversimplify this, but some people, for whatever reason, reasons, whether they be in a hurry or simply feel that they have more important things to do, will try to beat those lights, regardless of road conditions. Every year, when we get our first snowfall, we're, we're doing public service announcements to please slow down, the roads are slippery again, but yet we go on accident after accident after accident or collision because people are still driving too fast for conditions. And again, I would, I would refer to my report that a lot of the incidents that were reported in the narratives of the U10, which is the actual crash report that we submit to the state, you'll see people that were, were simply not being cautious, being inattentive. There were a few that we determined were, were trying to beat the light, one individual, and said that he was coming in too hot, I believe was his term, you know, speeding. So speed is a factor. But, you know, I've been in law enforcement for 30 years, and I tell people, you figure out people, you let me know, because there's still a mystery to me from things they do sometimes. And traffic is no different. Most people are, are safe. Most people are courteous. Most people obey the traffic laws or try to. But again, you're always gonna have an element that for whatever reasons are simply trying to act outside of those rules. So I'm not a traffic, regardless of 30 years, I'm not a traffic engineer. I can only speak to my experience and it's, and it's this that, you know, every, every day pretty much, we see people violating traffic laws. And when we do speak to them, it's simply, well, I thought I could, I thought I could beat the light. And that shows you where the conversation ends. So, sir, I, I hope that that that's sufficient of an explanation that I can offer.
I appreciate that, Chief. I appreciate your, your opinion on that particular area there as well, because that's been my observation with working on Second Avenue, that it doesn't seem to be steady. Do you, is there, and again, I'm not, I know you're not a traffic person and stuff, you know, I'm just wondering beyond that light, if there was anything else that you, you felt that, you know, us as a council could do to warn people of a school zone. You're right. I do, I, I do agree with your statement of saying most people are courteous and stuff and understanding a school zone. I think we have some school zone signs up on that road if I'm recalling correctly, and maybe Rich can answer that. You know, into that particular area. And we have, you know, I think all of us have received some information from citizens in that area when the light was first turned. But it's simply, you know, it doesn't see the traffic other than at that time. And I would say that that from what I've observed, my experience during the school letting out was very similar to what the mayor pro tem has experienced as well. And that, that time is a busy time. There is some congested traffic over there. You know, in, I didn't observe maybe the bus directly, but it was pretty crowded at that time. So again, you know, I just wanted to understand what the chief's opinion on was on that area and what we have for signage in that particular area as well currently.
If I may also add, one of the comments that I had received, and I, I actually thought it was a fairly astute observation. Currently, right now, we have the, the physical three light configuration signal hanging from the intersection. And I'm not saying this would make a difference, but it was, it gave me something to think about. And the caller, he said, he says, you know, he says, when people see a flashing yellow light in a three light configuration, they, because some of the reports we were getting were that motors were stopping in the middle of Second Avenue for unknown reasons, just stopping in the roadway. And as I was speaking to this caller, the citizen, he said, you know, when people see a flashing yellow light, they might be thinking that it's an operator turn red, that's why they're stopping. And I thought, you know, he might be onto something. That, that actually makes a little bit of sense there. So there was the suggestion that perhaps to consider if it was to remain a flashing yellow and a blinking red on the other side, to simply go to a single light configuration of flashing red on each side and a flashing yellow and do away with the three light configuration. No, I'm not saying that's gonna solve all the problems. Obviously, it won't, because as you saw from our report, even with, no matter what we had, people were doing silly things. But I, I did find that, I thought that was an interesting comment.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Mike. Amber Hess?
Yes, I appreciate everyone's comments so far, and I think I agree that making it a functioning three, three-choice light isn't, is gonna probably create more issues in the intersection than, than solve them. I have more confusion. I travel that intersection several times each day. And, and I've been turning left onto Miller off of Second, and someone coming at me with the flashing yellow stopped and just sits there. And they have to right away, and so I won't, it's been an issue more than once. So as Chief Jet just said, I think it may be Mayor Walagor's suggestion of just putting stop signs at Miller would alleviate that because people that are not familiar with the correct travel rules with blinking yellow or blinking red wouldn't have that confusion. There also is, last time we talked about this, I mentioned that on Miller Street, we have a blinking red. But if you're not familiar with that intersection, you don't know that the Second Avenue traffic has a blinking yellow, and they do not stop. You have no information to tell you that. So at the very least, having that information is vital for the people on Miller Street. But another option would be stop signs on each of Miller, then it would just be clear that of what's going on. We're not going to solve driver error by changing light pattern. And I definitely think if there, I was thinking before, before you mentioned about school signs, that is something, I know on Ripley, for example, there's the school, during school hours, there's a sign that asks, directs drivers to drive slower. School hours, you know, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM is 25. Maybe it's already 25, I can't remember 25 or 30 there, but it means having something that, that changes and blinks and shows if someone, this is during school hours, could be important just to catch attention and to hopefully slow people down, because it's really on driver to have that responsibility, but things that remind us that it's a school zone, I think, could be valuable. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah, just to address that, that really quick before, before Danny, is that there are signs there. There's the big yellow signs that say that it's a school zone. And as Amber pointed out, they don't flash and change the the speed limit like they do on Ripley, only because the speed limit's already 25 there, I believe. So Danny Mitchell, go ahead, sir.
Uh, primary concerns, as I understand, is safety of pedestrians and schoolchildren attending St. Mary's and all St. schools. Concern is also with cars turning off of Miller Street onto Second Avenue. Discussions have been held to partially or potentially spend $28,000 to install new signals and pressure leads to changing flashy signal lights to cycling lights. Good process, just too expensive. Installing a four-way stop along with signs of pedestrian crosswalks would be far less expensive and take care of another issue raised, which is the control of speed north and south on Second Avenue. Something the $28,000 project would not necessarily control. I believe the residents on the north side have talked at length about this. Four-way stop is far less expensive and I believe more effective. The light described only cycles if traffic were present on the sidewalks, so it would stay green until traffic approached, thus not slowing down the traffic. Having a four-way stop may provide the drivers a better opportunity to see if there are pedestrians before they move. And is there still a need, by the way, for a left-hand turn lane on Miller, on to Miller? That I don't know.
Just from my perspective, and I'm not, I, I don't ordinarily go through there when school lets out. So I really don't know how congested it gets in there, but I'm through there every morning and a couple of times during the day because my place of employment is down that way. But I don't, I don't know, the, your question, from my perspective of driving at any, almost any time other than when the school lets out or church lets out, lets out, I, I don't see a necessity for a turn lane there because like Amber said, when she was talking about somebody stopping at the yellow light when she's waiting to take the left, a lot of times I will, I, I will see either the person ahead of me or two people ahead of me. One of them stays in that straight lane, stays in the lane that's right in front of them with no intention on taking a left. It just, they more than likely haven't traveled down that way before. And so they, they go straight and the guy comes around them. And so now there's two people in the lanes. I think it's, I think the whole intersection is confusing now to people. Mainly people that aren't through there every day, all day. But you know, I think we're open to suggestions. It's, quite honestly, it doesn't sound like anyone is making a, a big pitch to, to put in the programmable light signal that was suggested to council. You know, Danny's suggestion of a four-way stop. The only other one that's kind of like that in that area is down on the other end. When you, when you go across the Ninth Avenue Bridge, you get a, you get a four-way stop there. I, I don't see a ton of, I don't see a ton of issues with that personally. It's a lot better. It's, I'll tell you what, from my perspective, it's a lot better than stopping on Second Avenue and waiting for a red light when there's absolutely no one else there.
I, I agree with that too, Mr. Mayor, and that's a, that's a, you know, I think is a, you know, is a solution, you know, that is a little bit better. I guess I would lean on Rich to see is there any issues with having a four-way stop within any issues with having a four-way stop within that that area, you know, not knowing the regulations like he would. I I think that would be a possibility if we wanted to go that direction.
And I I guess I would have to to think about that before I just rattled off an answer to that. There there's pros and cons to to any signalization or or traffic control device that you put in. And just to rattle something off, I don't think it would be in the best interest of the traveling public.
Okay, and I really appreciate that.
I appreciate that, Rich. You know, and if and if and if we're not going to completely resolve the issue tonight, let's make sure that that Rich has everyone's concerns or suggestions as to what we might do there. What is? So let me ask you this. Danny brought it up. What is everybody else's? What are your thoughts on a on a four-way stop? Does you guys want Rich to spend some time looking into that option or? That would be fine with me. Cindy, Amber?
I'm not opposed to a four-way stop, but I think that will cause more accidents on Second Avenue. I just think that um, you know, people are used to going through there where if you put a two stops on on either side of Miller, that makes more sense to me. Because that's normal when you come to a major intersection and you're going to cross it, that you have a stop sign. Putting a four-way stop in the middle of kind of nowhere seems odd. I'm not opposed to looking at it, but it seems like work might create an issue. I like the idea of stop signs on on both sides before people enter into Second Avenue as opposed to a four-way stop. But I'm open to looking at anything that anyone wants to investigate. I'm I'm open to looking at it.
Amber, your thoughts on that? Thank you, Cindy.
Mm-hmm. Um, my thoughts are pretty much aligned with Cindy's. If there was really strong reason why a four-way stop might be better than than only having two stop signs on Miller, I would consider it. But I I don't necessarily feel that stopping all traffic before moving on that road makes sense. I don't think there's, except for a couple of times a day, I don't think there are very few, very many people traveling north on Miller, on the other side. I think there's more flow from the other side. Most often, they're turning right towards downtown, and the stop sign accommodates them because there's no one coming. They could just go, whether it's blinking red or or a stop. So I think the two stop signs would more effectively keep the flow going in a safer with a safer result overall than than a four-way stop are are my thoughts. And you know, I had mentioned about there's several blocks before another light. Well, the majority of our roads in our community even that, you know, have Chisholm Street is a very busy street. There's you know, there's a good seven blocks between lights on the main stretch of Chisholm, you know, in front of restaurants and churches and and community places. There's just going to be stretches that don't call for stopping. It's really about enforcing of the traffic laws in those spaces. Thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with both of you, I guess. I I'm I'm certainly willing to look into it. Danny mentioned it, and that's fine. I'm not a I'm just not a huge fan of stopping just to stop. I guess I, you know, Cindy pointed out before, and maybe Joel Jett had said something as well, is that, you know, we we can't use, we can't use traffic signals and signs and things like that to 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 try and make somebody drive correctly. I don't need a stop sign, for instance, to to slow me down. I'm going to drive the speed limit, and if I don't, it's probably going to get enforced at some point or another. I don't I don't need a sign to to slow me down, to stop me for no particular reason. But but I I am I am in favor of of just having Rich maybe look into it. You know, and I know we're probably asking staff to go over this thing again, but that way we can all be comfortable. Perhaps Joel might even do a little bit of of digging as far as you know, what he might know about four-way stops. I don't want to put him on the on the spot anymore than I did Rich. So if, you know, if they want to take a quick look at it, we can postpone this for another meeting. And maybe get a response back as far as, you know, the likelihood of putting in a four-way stop. So there's another town that does it. I was just there. I don't know if it's Mansalona or some somewhere over there. There's literally a stop sign, and I I I'm almost certain that it's there to slow people down before they come into town. It's really annoying. But but that's just me. That's just me. I know everybody doesn't have my same opinion as me, so I would just soon have our two staff members take a look at that, if that's okay with Rachel.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to suggest, Mayor, that our staff get together again and evaluate that alternative and come back. My only question to Rich and Joel is how long we think that would take?
From my aspect of it, I think we can both get information together fairly quickly. It'd just be a matter of setting down or or communicating with Joel to get his input on it as well. So I think it could be turned around fairly quickly. I don't see a problem with that. Rich has the same database that I have. Information is readily available as far as, you know, the incident reports and maybe some other resources that the state can offer on traffic studies.
All right. So would it be safe to say then that it would be first meeting in February or second meeting in February? I don't want to put pressure on you guys at all. Obviously, I want to make sure you have time, but usually if we postpone, we postpone to a specific date.
Right.
Anna will make us pick a date, so.
I know.
Let's just put it to the second meeting in February, that make sure that that way we've got time. I know I've got to be off. I don't know what Joel's schedule is, but I've got a couple of days I've got to be off, so.
Well.
That sounds good.
All right, Councilman Noak, I move we postpone this issue to the second week in February.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Okay, so the second meeting is February fifteenth.
Thank you, Anna. That is correct.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Councilwoman Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
Give you patience on that one. Now we're up to new business. A is the 2021 City Concrete Program bid recommendation. Rich Sullinger. I'm sorry, you're muted, Rich, so you're going to have to probably start over.
You know, I I tried to turn it off so I won't make any noise while everybody else is talking. Sorry about that.
I thought maybe you'd blame it on Steve for continuously muting you when you didn't know it.
Steve keeps muting me, yeah. I apologize about that. On January fifth, twenty twenty-one, the city of Alpena received and opened bids for the annual city concrete program. The documents were sent to seven firms as well as posted on the city's website with two bids received for the attached results. And the difference between as bid and as read, there was a calculation error in Ryan Brothers' summer summation. So the as tabulated was for Bedrock was sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. And Ryan Brothers was ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And actually, we were we were surprised. I think the last few years, we've only gotten one bid from from Bedrock. So we were we were fortunate that we got a second bid for a comparative this year. After reviewing the proposed prices, it is my recommendation to city engineer that we award the city concrete program to Bedrock Contracting for the 2021 construction season that the unit prices outlined on the attached bid tabulation. This contract has an option of a single one-year renewal. And just be the way the contract is written, we use those unit prices and that total price of sixty-three, three fifty-seven is basically just for comparison purposes. Actual quantities installed may vary a little more or a little less than those quantities listed, but we have all the pricing that we need for concrete work throughout the year. The resident cost for sidewalk replacement under this program is established at sixty percent of the cost for installation of four-inch replacement sidewalk. This cost would include both the contractor cost of four dollars and four cents and the engineering cost of thirty-five cents per square foot, totaling four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Sixty percent of this cost would be two dollars and sixty-three cents per square foot. It is my recommendation to city engineer that property owner sidewalk rate be established at two dollars and sixty-three cents per square foot. This represents a thirty-nine cent per square foot increase over twenty twenty-eight per square foot. And, you know, going through the competitive bid process, you know, I certainly can't determine what that increase in cost is other than labor costs by the contractor.
Uh, thank you, Rich. Does anybody have any? Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, my Councilman Noak just got booted so from the meeting, so if we can give him a second to get back on.
I noticed that. I noticed that, too. Thank you. We'll give him a minute to to come back. While we're waiting, I guess, is anybody, is anybody else on council have questions for Rich on this?
None.
None.
Rich, did Councilman Noak, by chance, have any issues during the week since we had the since we had the packet or questions about the contract that you're aware of?
No, he did not. Sorry, Rich. Go ahead.
Oh, it's okay.
You normally ask why we didn't get any bid, any bids, but Rich already pointed out that we got one more than we got last year, so.
Do you want to move forward or do you want to wait?
I think we'll move forward. Rachel, can you can you, by chance, text Mike and see if there's something something that's keeping him from coming back or?
Sure, will do.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to to accept that that bid.
So this is, this will have to be made in two motions, correct? Because we're talking about two different things.
Yes, we'll do award the contract and one to set the per square foot rate.
So I move that we award the contract to Bedrock Bedrock Contracting in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents with the possibility of a one-year renewal.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
And Rich, is that amount? You were saying something about that amount. Is that amount going to be okay? Or do you do you suggest a because that's based on?
It should probably state for the as bid unit prices totally.
Okay, I will add that to my motion.
Okay, Councilman Noak is absent. So Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
And then to Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, I will make a motion that property, the property owner sidewalk rate will be established at two dollars and sixty-three cents in the year 2021.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
Thank you. I almost moved on and forgot about that already.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
And is Councilman Noak still absent? I don't see him on here. I'll mark him as absent again. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich.
I'm sorry, just an update. He's still having trouble getting on, but he's going to try and call in.
Okay. All right, and we'll we'll keep going just in the event that that he has a ongoing issue. So next up is the adoption of the 2021 through 2025 Recreation Plan. Andrea Kears, Director of Planning, Development, and Zoning this year.
Thank you. The current City of Alpena Recreation Plan covers the years 2016 through 2020. The plan is required to be updated every five years if the city wishes to be eligible to apply for grants through the DNR. So due to this, the updated and approved 2021 through 2025 Recreation Plan needs to be submitted to the DNR no later than February first of 2021. So a notice of hearing and thirty-day comment period were posted in the Alpena News on the 10th of December, and the draft Recreation Plan was made available on both the City of Alpena website and the NEMCOG website for review on or before the 10th. So once the comment period ended, a public hearing was held on the 12th of January 2021 by the City of Alpena Planning Commission. Following the hearing, the City of Alpena Planning Commission approved the Recreation Plan with the condition that their comments be addressed before final approval is given by council. All of the planning commission comments have been addressed, and it is the recommendation of staff that the mayor and city council passed Resolution 2021-01 adopting the 2021 through 2025 Recreation Plan for the City of Alpena. Jack would also like to thank the mayor and council for their time. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your time, Andrea. Quite a quite an accomplishment for your one of your first major duties in your role, but I don't have any specific questions regarding approval of the of the plan. I don't know if anyone else on council does.
No questions.
No questions, Mr. Mayor, now that I'm back.
Oh, you are back. All right. Thank you, sir. You missed a ton. So with with no questions on the, this is the adoption of the 21 through 25 Recreation Plan. Someone would like to move we adopt that?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, I move we adopt the 2021 to 2025 rec plan.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Noak, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. And now we're set to return to closed session.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead. Mike, go ahead.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss pending litigation of the Courier LLC and Catherine Schultz versus the City of Alpena.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora? Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
And Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, and just a quick note to anyone from the media or the residency still on the call is that we, we will be back to this meeting, but just to adjourn open session because we don't, we won't have any action coming out of closed session, so you're welcome to stay to hear us adjourn, or or you can go. Thanks.